Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining the South Fulton Coalition for our citizens conversation. Tonight, we have two special guests. We have Tanya Isles Anderson, who will be serving as our moderator, having the conversation with District Two candidate, Dejaris Glasgow. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Tanya Isles Anderson, who is a resident of the city of South Fulton and a resident of District Two. So, Ms. Anderson, you have the floor. Thank you.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning in. We're looking forward to having a great conversation. As residents in District Two, get ready to make a very important decision on what will frankly have a direct impact on shaping the future of this city that we live in. So, you'll notice that a lot of my questions tonight are going to be framed around specific examples of where you've done this work before. Because I, for me personally, I'm excited about new candidates. Okay? I'm very excited about new candidates. I'm very excited about people who have experience from corporate that they can bring in to this government space and help improve the quality of life for District Two in particular and the entire city when we look at it as a whole. So, as Richard said, my name is Tanya Isles Anderson. I've lived in the city of, lived in the South Fulton area for over fifteen years now. I'm a North Carolina native. I have an engineering degree from North Carolina State University. And I now own Guided Insurance, which is a full-service insurance agency based here in Atlanta, where we can save you money on your auto, home, and life insurance. So, give us a call. So, again, tonight, just really looking forward to getting to know Ms. Glasgow better. And she's a North Carolina college graduate as well, so we have that connection. So, that's, that's great. And just really looking forward to meeting her and learning more about her platform. And again, really going to dig into specific examples of a new way of looking at things that she could bring to our city council. So, with that, Dejaris, if you'll just start us off with introducing yourself, maybe take a couple of minutes to do that.
Absolutely. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to have this platform to be able to speak with the residents. I am the candidate for District Two City Council for the city of South Fulton. I have lived in this area and I'm a proud resident. And one of my things that I always talk about is not just that the city is a city on the rise, we are a city with so many prizes. And so, with that, that brings in my unique experience. I have been in corporate now for well over fifteen years in a unique space because I do human resources and strategic management day to day. But my responsibility is consulting senior advisors on public sector contracts. So, I understand how legislation, you have to read it, read it, read it, to make sure that it is effective in your understanding all of the nuances that come with this. I am a native of Charleston, South Carolina, by way of Newport News Hampton, Virginia. As it's already been mentioned, I'm a graduate of Johnson C. Smith University in Charlotte, North Carolina, as well as a graduate of Tulane Law School with a Master's of Jurisprudence in Labor and Employment Law. I'm a proud mother, wife, I'm a, my grandmother, I have a multicultural home. I always make people laugh because I said, "It's nothing like having someone that talks about accountability, but when accountability lives with you, that looks very, very different." So, that's one of the key things to, just, I know we're going to get a little bit more into like what my platform is, but really want to talk a lot about what my plans are in regards to understanding what we can do for economic development, increasing public safety and more so the resources that we have available to small businesses and our community.
Okay, very, very good. Looking forward to hearing more about all of that. And again, just, just really excited about, you know, potential new perspective and a new way of looking at things. So, we'll just jump right into my questions. You know, it's, it's no secret that the city kind of has functioned as if we're just composed of these districts just, that just happen to get thrown together. And there's a lot of individual activity going on in each district. So, there's opportunity there to work, work more like a cohesive one-city, while still having the separate districts that, you know, are working to build their own identity, working to focus on what matters to, you know, that portion of the city. But opportunity there to bring us together and more unity. So, how, how are some specific examples of how you would, you would facilitate that with, you know, the other council members and whoever the new mayor is? If you're elected for District Two?
Yes, and I think one of the big things I always like to talk about is like, South Fulton has a robust strategic plan that rolls out what our model is, what type of model city that we're aspiring to be. So, my intention with working with the different districts is understanding what districts, what is that piece that they actually put into that model, right? So, there are going to be some areas, some districts that their hubs are going to be primarily where we're going to house a lot of economic development. There are going to be a district that has a lot of development when it comes just for housing. But making sure that I understand and I'm working collaboratively specifically with those districts. And I like to always say, like, to give you like a specific example, is actually talking to city council people and their residents a lot of times. Because oftentimes, even though I'll be representing just District Two, in order for us to be a successful city, we have to be conducive, right? Because who's to say the person who is living in District Seven won't want to be living in District Two and vice versa? And so, in order to have a cohesive city, you have to understand the needs of people of like, hey, what's moving them to, moving them to two or wanting them to come to two? Is that a deficit or is that just because this is the best model based of how we've built our city? So, like I said, to reiterate, I will utilize our strategic plan to actually emphasize what that model is and then compound on those councilmen for those districts.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. So, again, just kind of building on my many years in working in various corporate settings, you know, worked for large companies like Coca-Cola and Nestle, worked for a couple of startups, that kind of thing. But one thing that's common when it comes to meetings in corporate, now, we won't go back to the, you know, the eighties and the early nineties, but in recent years, efficiency has mattered with, with meetings. You know, no, no company, unless it's a summit or something like that, people are just not spending hours upon hours in one meeting. You know, especially a recurring meeting. So, you know, again, full transparency, we know that the council meetings and the executive sessions are just way too long. It's, it's caused a lot of residents who truly care about their community to just disengage, not attend. And I'm one of those, you know, because I just, I just don't choose to spend my time that way. So, when I do go to city council, these long city council meetings, I, I take note of what's causing these delays. And oftentimes, it's rooted in lack of understanding of parliamentary procedure. Okay? So, it's people, you know, doing things out of order, bringing up things at the wrong time, that kind of thing. Additionally, I noticed that certain council members actually get up and exit the meeting room while the meeting is going on. Okay? So, so these are, these are things that just bring in unnecessary delays. And, and they come off as, as unprofessional and, and not like leaders should, should be presenting themselves. So, can you share with me some specific strategies that you will share with your fellow elected officials? If, if you are elected for the seat, so that we can, we can get those residents back who've disengaged because of these lengthy meetings? Get those residents back because they have valuable input, you know? And again, they do care about what's going on with the city. So, what are some strategic, some specific strategies that you would use to work with the other council members to make those meetings more efficient? You know, whether that's you guys meeting more offline, so that, you know, you can be settled on things like the agenda? You know, for, for example, the last meeting I went to, we literally spent thirty minutes in public, you know, during the meeting, haggling over the agenda. So, what, what are some things that you would do to try to get the group to work together and, and make better use of the residents' time?
Absolutely. So, I think one of the first things we, I, I love that you brought up efficiency with me being in HR. The first thing how you mentioned is not just meeting beforehand, but understanding what pre-work looks like. So, like, coming in immediately is definitely teaching my counterparts that I'll be sitting on the council work, council with, is that how do you effectively have a working session prior to your meeting? And so, some of those things are ironing out what the agenda items are. Some of those things are going to be like, how do you ask questions that, you know, that are, are productive to getting results and answers that you need versus how do you do this pre-work research? So, that's going to be one of the first strategies that I come in with is that like, how do you schedule a working session? And how do you productively, productively do it? Now, there's going to be times where we're already in that space. We're already live, we're already rolling, and you're like, "Dejaris, we need you to solve this right now when the cameras are going and we're already there." I think you have to be, and I'm not going to say I think, I know I have to be the person in the room that's able to shift and control the conversation in a respectful manner, so they understand the tone of what we're trying to go to. So, when it comes down to concerns of agenda items, one of the first things we would do is offline session. However, it's just a simple click in an email saying that vote, everyone is aware, right? So, when you have that already, when we're jumping into our meeting, we're already having this conversation because we're already an agreeance that this was the agenda items that we were supposed to be addressing. The second thing about the, the questions or concerns is that things that are not a matter of concern of the public are more so that are matters of concern of the council, that I want to clarify this, I want to do this. We want to, we, we need to stay away from that because we don't have anything to prove to anyone when we're, when we're having conversations about negatives, right? So, my goal in the meeting is to make sure that those type of conversations, they aren't making it to the forefront, right? And it's not because we don't want it to be transparent, is that we really have to get to a point where conversations are productive. And these productive conversations are based off the guided agenda because we have developers that are in there that are considering having, having their plans with that, having their plans voted on. And oftentimes, they're having to shift their plan or, you know, they're having to come back for another meeting, it's being blacklogged. And so, those are the type of things that makes people say like, "Hey, I don't want to do business in this city." So, it's not just the tearing residents, it also can deter a lot of business opportunities. And I know one of the things that the city manager has really spoke a lot about is how the Economic Development Department is doing a lot of work right now to champion some of those opportunities to come with us. But in order for us to do that, nobody wants to invest when they have to share their plan. Nobody wants to wait four hours to talk about what they need to talk about, right? Or to be there four hours in, it'd be prolonged back. So, the longer the shorter, my answer is really them coming in and making sure that we're having working sessions and actually teaching them how to have effective working sessions. And then, once we are live, if things are going astray, being that person who knows how to, I like to say, I'm not the parliamentary, but I know how to make a meeting stay on track and how to get things moving. And I also know the importance of there's a time and a place for everything.
Okay, okay. Very, very good. That's, that would be a refreshing change, for sure. So, kind of staying in that same type space. You know, again, as a resident of the city of South Fulton and as I'm out and about, you know, especially as I'm in growth mode for my business, and when people ask me where I'm from or where do I live, I, I kind of hold back on my response depending on the audience that I'm talking to. And I, I don't like feeling that way. And a lot of that is rooted in some of this negativity that has made its way to the local news, that has made its way to the national news and even international news, probably. Okay? So, I think that-
And the social news. We can't forget how big social media has become with viral moments that we don't want to be the, we don't want those to be our viral moments that we have.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for adding that in. So, I think, you know, I'm excited about this opportunity to, to just really get some new ideas, some new people seated on this council and, and, you know, in, in the rest of the elected official seats. But I, I think that for the sake of the city and the city's reputation, a unified, the word apology might not be appropriate, but, but almost, you know, an apology for some of this stuff that's come out in the past and drawing a clear line in the sand saying that, you know, we are the newly-elected city council and mayor for the city of South Fulton. And we, we certify and pledge to you, citizens of the city, citizens of the county, that the past behaviors that you've witnessed out of this body, we will not continue doing that. So, I would just like to know, what are your thoughts about that? Do you think that's an appropriate, one of the first things that this new, newly-seated council does?
A hundred percent. And I said this when, last week when we were at the forum. I, I was raised by my grandparents and one of the things that they always taught me was manners will take you where money won't. And that's always stuck with me because not only is it an apology, because sometimes you don't have to apologize because you did anything wrong. I'm apologizing because now as your new representative in this seat, I need to give you an oath that this is not an experience that you would get out of your representative. And if I was to witness that, I do what I need to do to ensure that we downplay it, right? Or we actually resolve that issue because we want everyone to be proud residents. Because, like I said, I said in the beginning, beginning when I was doing my introduction, we are a city on the rise, but most importantly, we are the city with the prize. Look where we are, where, where we are seated as a city, it shows us that we have so many opportunities and there's so many chances for us to be that bright and shining light. But we have to demonstrate that in all spaces. And I, I just think the lack of regard for each other and respect has, it, it is a major issue. And I think what some of those pieces come from, not really understanding how social media can really deter how people look at you. Everybody's looking, a lot of people are looking for those viral moments because it feels good to them to be on the news like, oh, this person is doing this, she doesn't play or he doesn't play. You know, they, they, they got this and everybody, it's a sound, now you're a soundbite. Everybody is looking for that opportunity, but it would do our city a better service if we had a viral moment of us doing something phenomenal. If we had a soundbite of something that was phenomenal, if we had a vision that actually people came in and they're like, "You know what? I want to move to South Fulton. I'm not interested in going to the city of Atlanta. I'm not interested in going to the north. I really want to go to South Fulton because I want to be able to get to the airport. I want to be able to get to the interstate. I want to be able to get to various attractions." My kids, you know, we have prominent and great schools in our district. So, it's one of those things that we have the prizes here, but we have to carry ourselves. And I said it before, in a magnitude at all times where we have poison dignity. So, that would be a, not only just a, like I said, a front apology, but more so an oath that I will provide my residents, making sure that I will not demonstrate any of those behaviors, but I also would be willing to advocate and champion curtailing it when I do see it happening.
Exactly. Very, very good. And I, I'm not as active on Nextdoor as I used to be, but, but have been more so in recent weeks. And in one of my summaries following one of the city council meetings, I posed that very question. You know, there, there are some council members who have not participated in this, this inappropriate behavior. However, it's not getting publicly, it's, it's being done in public and, and no one is, is kind of calling them out in, in public for it, you know? And so, sometimes when you, when you don't speak against it, it's almost like, okay, are you just turning a blind eye to it or are you secretly condoning it, you know? So, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, you know, when I'm thinking about who I'm going to cast my vote for as a resident of District Two, I'm looking for someone who I, I know for sure that I don't ever have to, you know, be ready to put my head down at something that my city council person has said from the dais or that, you know, he or she has cut off, you know, another person while they're trying to speak or, you know, walking in and out of the meeting, doing, doing any of these things that I've already outlined. I, I want to make sure that I'm choosing someone who understands the importance of the meeting and under, understands, understands appropriate behavior. So, very, very good, good responses there. Wolf Creek Amphitheater. The gem of District Two. It's, it's, you know, in my opinion, it's, it's arguably the best amphitheater. I, you know, I haven't traveled the whole state to see all of them, but in the metro area, I call it the best one. And it's, it's been very disheartening that, that it just, it hasn't been open and functioning as designed for the entire time this city's been a city. You know, and the county can point fingers at the city, the city can point fingers right back at the county, but at the end of the day, the thing is not being used as it's designed. And a lot of money's being spent to maintain it, even though it's not being used as designed. So, I, I just have a little bit of discussion I want to have about that. So, you know, as the District Two council member, residents expect you to lead the way to ensuring a desirable concert lineup, you know, which, which alludes to some of that pre-planning that you were talking about, not waiting until all the deadlines have passed and, and all the time for negotiation has passed. But, but we, we want to see that, that venue operating as it did pre-city of South Fulton existence with a decent concert lineup for the entire outdoor concert season. You know, not, not having the first concert in August, you know, and extending them into October. We also want to have it function as the other venues where there's no cooler fee, there's, there's no excess parking fees. There's, you know, just go have a good outdoor experience. So, as a, you know, as the District Two council person, what will you do to, to, you know, restore this gem in our district? Back to what it used to be or even make it better than what it used to be?
Absolutely. So, I think one of the biggest things we have to start doing is leaning a little bit more into our Economic Development and Cultural Affairs Group, right? And the reason why I say that is because there are going to be the stewards and expertise of like how you develop these partnerships, right? And one of the things I've always said, and I've, I've gotten from my, my experience of working, is that history will tell you what you need to do and history will tell you what you should not be doing. And so, I think one of the biggest things that as a city, we have to be mindful of is that these concerts and these lines up that we're targeting, going back to pre-planning, right? So, if we're planning this for the summertime, as your city council person, I'm going to be ensuring that I'm, I'm working with the city manager and city manager's working with economic development in January, right? Because as soon as that season is over, we should already be preparing for the next season. We should have already, I will already be making sure that the surveys have gone out of what the lineup, lineups have, that they're expecting. Like, hey, we saw this, but this did not go well, right? Those are the type of things that you have to do in a planning session to really understand like, how are we going to move forward with those decisions? Because you, you said it and a lot of people said it as well, is that like, pointing a finger doesn't solve anything, right? It's just, it's a constant back and forth because we live in a world where nobody wants to be at fault for anything. But that also goes back to accountability. So, you know, the first thing I would do is once getting in, once getting in office, is really having a conversation to understand what are those accountability opportunities that South Fulton missed on? And moving forward, the crafting out a plan with the right parties involved, because that's a big piece. The right parties have to be involved. This is not a one-man show. Even though this is District Two's gem, this is South Fulton's prize, right? So, what does South Fulton have? What, what do we want to make sure that is there? And the second thing is that we want to make sure that we're drawing residents from everywhere, right? You know, like, we know, we, we take those drives to the city to go different places, Johns Creek, Douglasville, we, we take that drive. We want to make sure people are taking that drive to us as well and they feel like it's not for foolishness. It's actually for organization and structure. And one of the biggest things, I've heard a lot of residents say is that, um, sometimes we got to stare ourselves away from all the big names, right? Sometimes we get so excited about the glitz and the glam of, you know, these million-dollar businesses that want to manage us and, you know, they want to do this and they want to do that. Sometimes we have to give the opportunities to those in our community that may have that innovation, innovative mind to what things that we're trying to put in place because sometimes those big brands, I'll be honest with you. I, I have, I don't know if you have looked at my LinkedIn, but I have consulted everywhere from Delta Airlines, PricewaterhouseCooper. You know, the biggest thing that they've done, they've worked on their brand, right? And so, that's what we have to do. We have to work on our brand, but work on our brand from inside. And we have enough change, we had nine, we have nine people running for this district. So, that means that we have the same amount of people who have some things, other agents that could help and support us with that, with those things. So, that's one of the main things, I think I could talk about this all day because like I said, I have a multi-generational home. So, my teens want things at Wolf Creek, my grandmother want things at Wolf Creek, uh, my mom want things at Wolf. I know what the people want because they are in my household every day.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Yeah. You know, I, I kind of think of, think of some of it as we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, there, there are so many other cities who have amphitheaters and they manage to, to, you know, have the equipment endure the elements so that they don't have to replace it, you know, in between seasons. They manage to get a decent lineup, they manage to keep prices reasonable for the patrons, all of these things. So, I, I want the new, newly-elected officials to, to, you know, like you said, collaborate, you know? Ask, ask some people who are getting it right, you know, "How'd you do this? What would you suggest we do?" Rather than going out and spending money on these separate audit teams and, and things, you know? Just, just go ask a neighboring city council person, you know, that probably will cost nothing and you can get what, what you need. So, um, so yeah, I, I like that. I like that. So, as a small business owner, when I was choosing a location for my office and, you know, as a resident of South Fulton, of course, I, I would have loved to set my office up here in South Fulton. But I had heard from some other small business owners who, who actually did set up in South Fulton and some who tried and decided to go someplace else, that they experienced a lot of, you know, red tape for the, for the, lack of a better word, a lot of delays, a lot of slow or no response when they would, would contact the city to try to get important information that they needed to move their business forward. So, as you're planning, you know, if, if you become elected and you're, you're planning your work, do you believe that small businesses are truly the heartbeat of America? And what's included in your plan to support small businesses to draw them, you know, to want to come to South Fulton? To be able to afford to be in South Fulton? And I know that we've seen some businesses come and go, you know, and, and there are a lot of factors that can play into that. But, you know, as far as where my, where my office is, it's actually in an eleven-story building on a, on the fifth floor, on the, in Regis, you know, it's handled by Regis. So, it, it offers that flexible space, you know, where people can just have a one-hour meeting, have a half-day meeting, rent a space that they pay for monthly. So, what, what kinds of, what kinds of connections do you already have to kind of bring that type of meeting space to South Fulton? So that, so that small business owners can thrive in their neighborhood? And so that, you know, in the event that residents, you know, want to have a, a meeting of some sort, they have a decent, large enough space where people can meet comfortably?
Yeah, I think, and, and I, I'm glad you brought this question up. So, today, just so coincidentally, I actually went in our district and was knocking, not on house doors, but actually small business doors and having the conversations. And it was disheartening to see the, the ones that have closed down, right? And do I know the backstory for why all of them have closed down? I don't. But what I can tell you is some of my closest friends, similar to yourself, they have businesses in South Fulton. And one of their, one of their main concern, I would say, is that the process is very daunting, right? So, one of my first things and is actually a part of my plan is looking at how can we become more efficient with streamlining our, our business process, right? You know, when, as a growing city, some of the ordinances we had in place when, you know, when we started out as a city, we are going to probably have to relook at them and figure out how can we re-author them so they could be more inviting? And also, make sure that they're not written in a space to where it could present litigation concerns, right? Because we've seen that happen as well, like, you know, with non-competes, like, we can't, we can't have legislation that monopolizes the area, but still, in the same breath, we're saying we want to promote economic development. So, I think that's one of the first things that I'm thinking about from that process of streamlining, streamlining, streamlining it, if I could get the words out. And then, secondly, incentives, right? We have got to incentivize our small businesses because not only do I believe it's the heartbeat, you know, of our country, it is the marketing and brand of our country, but it's really the way of life, right? If we think about how people are moving and how things are, are trending, no longer are brick and mortars going to be those, those prime spaces. A lot of times, there are going to be innovations where like, hey, I just need a space where I can work. I just need a space where, you know, we could do this for a couple of hours, like, like how you're mentioning. So, my experience and my partnerships that I already have has been, you know, working with WeWorks and with those contracts as well because WeWorks, you know, they really want to grow their brand in more of a saturated rural area. Even though we are not rural, in that sense, they're really ready to tap into that market because what you're seeing now is every, a lot of people are working from home. Some people are able to, you know, have to go into office, but those who want to work at home, they want a space to do that in. Because if anybody works from home, they know you work so much harder from home. You don't take a lunch break, you you know, you don't do those things. So, um, working with uh WeWork is some of the other ones. There's also some small some membership-only social clubs that I've spoken with, um, individuals who, you know, they really are interested in bringing a social club aspect here to the city of South Fulton because when you look at our demographics of working professionals that we have as well as our average income and median here, we we have what it takes to, you know, have our own social club in this environment to give us those type of spaces. So we have some nu- unique opportunities that I've worked personally with and met people with. Um, but I think one of the things I I am very proud to say that I do have experiences experiencing is is selling what someone has. Like, you know, one thing you know about HR, you learn how to sell a company, right? Um, from what are the the motivators of a city, um, what are gonna be those um e- experiences of the city? And I think one of the things I've mentioned before is streamlining our processes, uh incentives, but most importantly, making sure that we're finding fits that fit us, um, and not fits that just, you know, wanna be here for only the center.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, good, good stuff. Uh, Rashard, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to let the audience know if you have a question you would like to ask our candidate tonight, Mr. Jarvis Glasgow, please use the reaction button and raise your hand to ask your question and we will acknowledge you. Um, and uh I don't see any questions in the chat yet. I just wanted to make that that general announcement. Oh, there is one question from uh Mel Keaton. Would you agree with the incoming council to push for changing the city's name of, I'm sorry, changing the name of the city again?
I would say right now, I'm gonna be honest with you, I would not. Um, i- i- it would probably take a lot um with me, like speaking with residents to get a better understanding of why. And the reason why I say I would not is primarily because of how much the city has already poured into financially, um, with, you know, branding. I I I can't remember how much we spent, but we just have a, we just uh created a new bird, which is, I think, Sofu. Um, Sofu is all over uh South Fulton. I don't know if you've seen Sofu, Toucan Sam, um, cousin. But uh that wa- that was a very, very big investment um for the city. We have, we have incorporated SF in a lot of our branding uh material. Um, even, and and I I think one of the things that people don't realize is that, like, there are small pieces that we've already, like, established, just like our street names, right? A lot of people talk about like what our investments are, like sidewalks, um, you know, like for street signs. A lot of those things have already been fused into a lot of those plans. So we would have to go back to the drawing board on a lot of things. And I think sometimes that people are thinking about like, hey, let's change the city name because that will give us an opportunity to, you know, rebrand ourselves, um, in a sense, like a lot of businesses do, like, hey, we were once this, we wanna detach, and now we're restarting. Um, but as an eight-year city, I think that the name South Fulton still holds a lot of weight, right? Um, not only does it hold a lot of weight, I believe that the city itself has also demonstrated uh in these years what we can be. Um, I don't want us to focus on the temporary blemishes uh for a future of change that we will have. Uh, this is a long road, right? Um, every city, um, doesn't have to go through some of the things that we've gone through. But because we are going through them, I think that we need to, you know, really focus on rebranding with our process and our ways and not just our name. Because we can change our name seven times, but if we don't change our ways, the trajectory will continuously be when things go awry, we change our name and we will become the city of many names, but the same face. And that's not what we wanna be.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that question. And then I have one more question, um, from so thi- thinking about the charter, um, are there any changes that you would recommend or that you would like to see that are made to our charter? And then the pa- the second part to this question is changes to the charter. Do you think that the council should be making those changes or should those go back to the voters in the form of a referendum for it to appear on the ballot for voters to make that decision as to if that change should occur?
Yeah, so I think this is a phenomenal question and I and I I and I will tie it um to the millage rate specifically, right? So I wouldn't say, and and I don't wanna mince my words with this, so just bear with me as I may say a lot, say, talk a little bit slower in this space. Um, I wanna make sure that our charter has less ambiguous language. I think that's one of the biggest things, right? Um, and I understand when you are writing something from a legal perspective, that is how it's gonna be written. But there are some opportunities where things are ambiguous ambiguous. And I I say that when I bring up the millage rate is because there is a section, a subsection that says that it has the verb is written out as far as the voter referendum. Uh, what is to happen in regards to the cap, um, the first year existence, the expectations, even the roll cap, right? Um, but what is not clear is, um, when they talk about how General Assembly can play a part if that council decides that they want to move forward without a referendum, right? Um, that part is not clear. It's it's, and when I say not clear, I mean ambiguous. Um, it is open to the interpretation of the attorneys. And so, uh, we have our city attorney in South Fulton that felt like there were some things when it comes down to general law and our Georgia State Constitution that stated that they would be able to move forward with that cap without a voter referendum. However, um, law is still an interpretation. So, you know, when I looked at it and I reviewed it, there is also a portion that can be interpreted as that a referendum would have to be put in place uh to vote for the General Assembly to actually make that change. Uh, even if they did not vote on the millage cap, we would need to do a referendum for the millage, um, excuse me, for the General Assembly. So um, I I can't call out the specific things that I will change, um, because there, you know, there are small parts within various subsections. But what I will say is that I think that we do need to look at our charter very closely to ensure that those subsections that have those ambiguous parts, uh, it becomes a little bit more clear. And when we're talking about making those changes, we are doing it from a voter referendum um, um, perspective so that we can communicate what those changes are and why we are clearing them up. Cuz that is a big piece of things. It's like, things are often explained in a way to people, so people can understand them.
Thank you so much for that explanation. Back to you, um, Ms. Anderson.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, very, very good, uh, good discussion there. Um, so there are more and more people are caring for aging parents now. Um, and there there, the health challenges that the aging parents are experiencing are often requiring uh the help of specialists, uh, medical professionals, um, you know, things that uh that primary care, um, or, you know, urgent care can't take care of. Um, so here in in South Fulton, um, if if you want your loved one to have uh to be seen by the best in in that business, um, you're you're going to basically have to be prepared to either drive into the city of Atlanta, uh, drive north to places like Johns Creek, Woodstock, um, over by Emery, uh, things like that. Um, just to have a visit, you know, with with a specialist. And as we all know, when you're, when you're in something that requires a specialist, it's not just one visit and you get all the answers and all the medication and and everything you need. It's it's a series. Uh, so sometimes people end up having to spend money on a hotel, you know, closer to this specialist doctor office. Meanwhile, uh, here in South Fulton, as we're departing our homes, trying to get to those specialists, we're driving past vacant warehouse space, we're driving past, you know, small businesses that shuttered. Um, plenty of opportunity uh to to set up some of these specialists that are closer, closer by. So do you already have um some experience with medical professionals uh where you could possibly impact them to open up satellite offices um here in our area? So that we can uh more efficiently take care of our loved ones?
So I don't have any um direct partnerships with doctors' offices, um, but I have direct experience with aging parents. Um, I'm a caregiver, as I mentioned, for my grandmother. I think one of the things we have to talk a little bit about is that there are some resources that are available that a lot of people don't know about, right? Um, depending on the state of the person that you're caring for, um, they do have some medical services that are mobile where they come into the home. And and when, and I I will tell you, I was the first one that was shocked um in regards because my grandma had a cardiologist come into our house, they they did the the EKG, they did all of the info. And I I was shocked. I never knew that they had these type of mobile um equipment that is there. So that's one of the first things is that sometimes we have to make sure that our residents know about the resources um that we have. And, you know, as a caregiver, I know a lot about the resources that are available. I think the second thing is, is that beginning to target a lot more of those groups. Um, Piedmont has, uh, in a good way, has saturated that Camp Creek Cascade uh area. Um, and, you know, we wanna make sure that we continue to build off of that. So, you know, making sure that we're starting to have the partnerships with them to let them know what type of resources that we do have available. And then again, we have to survey, right? We have to talk to people. What are those um necessity needs that they're seeing that needs to be um prioritized? And I can tell you right now, one of the biggest ones is, you know, kidney doctors. Um, diabetes is at a a a high alarming rate. Um, and especially among the African-American community. And I will tell you, we only have one office for nephrologists uh in our area. Um, and so as a person who has had a grandfather that passed away from renal um disease failure and to have a grandmother that has stage three uh renal failure, one of the things I know is that when it's time to go to that doctor, the appointments are far apart, right? Um, and so much could happen to a person in ninety days. So not only do we have to think about it from the perspective of making sure that they know about the resources and that we're doing the business, we're bringing more of it, you know? Uh, and so, like I said, I don't have direct experience with doctors um itself, but I do have a a wealth of experience with um, the resources that are available as well as uh hospital models that um that want to fit into our spaces. And I could tell you, Piedmont is one of them, and we really should be knocking on their doors uh as soon as possible to make sure that we're bringing those opportunities to South Fulton.
Okay, very, very good. Uh, let's see, I saw a raised hand with uh Quasar first. And then now I see Rashard. Um, is is that kind of the same hand raised?
Uh, Quasar, I will unmute you. Uh, one second. Actually, I won't, yeah. All right, Quasar, you should be unmuted. Um, you have the floor.
Oh, he's, he put no in the chat.
All right, all right, so I will, I I'll ask the question that's in the chat. Each district has a monthly food giveaway, which has been going on since the city began. Is one thing to hand out turkeys, how do you fix food insecurities in our city?
Uh, I think, we we do have a lot, we we do have a lot of food insecurities and we also have a lot of food giveaways. And I think, um, we could do, we could do better, a lot better with our stewards of our time and collaboration. Um, we talked about this in the beginning, um, and I don't know if everyone was here for that part of the conversation, but we have to start working more as one city. We have got to. Um, District Two is not this, just this this city. It's, it's a portion of our city. And when we begin to, you know, reach out and have those hands, that will allow us to continue to, you know, progressive, progressively move forward as a city, right? Um, and I think one of the ways how we can address those foods, those food insecurities is definitely looking at the needs and how we can meet them in the middle, partnering very closely with our churches, right? Uh, we can have, we we have so many people who are members of churches in our various communities, and they're doing a lot of work, right? They're doing a lot of work and there's a church probably, I would say probably three fi- three to ten miles of each other, right? So if a lot of times, I think when we were, it was two meetings ago, they were talking about um these type of events and they gave the recommendation of like, is this a good service of the benefit of the community and possibly partnering with more nonprofits? That's what we should be doing as a district. As a, as a city councilperson, we should be looking more towards what community district, what community or nonprofit organization is already doing this work so that we could give and expand, uh, you know, like branding for them. So people know like, hey, cuz we're giving this food insecurity maybe once a month, this community drive or the nonprofit, they're doing this on a day-to-day basis. These are the things I'm telling you where the resources are in, the prizes are in the city on the rise, but we have got to make sure that the people know where the prizes are actually located. And I think we do that by more, not just hosting it, but like, you know, being that person that is promoting, like, we're doing this community drive. You know, councilpersons and one, two, and three has partnered with this nonprofit for this particular area and they, they service your area. So now, as a, you know, like, where, who, whatever needs you have, whether it's as a a mother, um, of individual in need, a, you know, like a senior, you now know that, hey, I can ask my city councilperson to see when the next event is, but I also have a second resource cuz now I know about this nonprofit I never knew about.
All right, thank you so much. And I'm gonna get one more question and then we're gonna go over to Phyllis Reed. That second question in the chat was residency requirements have been challenged a for a few members of council and currently District Six candidate has been disqualified. What is an option plan or new policy to deal with qualifying?
Um, I think this is a, a, one of those, those, one of those tricky nuances that uh the, what we have is probably gonna be the best that we can do, um, right now. And the only reason why I say that is because when we think about like how we check the voter registration, making sure that information is up to date, we don't have any other recourse um that we really could do that would not um promote a fair process, right? Cuz if we say like, hey, make sure your driver's license is within the last year, what about the person who just lost their driver's license, right? Um, then it becomes like, you know, like, hey, what about, you know, bringing uh like different bills um to verify? I think those are like, you know, invading people's privacy and spaces of like whatever their situation is. So I think that, um, developing a new plan is is not going to be, um, something that I think we really could, that would promote a big change. But I do think one of the things that we can do is making sure that we try our best to have a better eye on it, but understand we do have this process in place in the event that you feel like a person is not qualified because of residency.
Thank you so much for that. Ms. Phyllis Reed, uh, please unmute yourself. You have the floor. Thank you.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to uh, uh, the uh food insecurities. Um, I'm not sure about with these organizations, if they bring food to uh individuals because we make a a lot of assumptions that individuals have cars or whatever. Right now, here in the city of South Fulton, the uh public transportation is not there. So, uh, when we looking at these organizations uh for individuals that can't get to where they're having it at the churches, where they're having it at, uh, at, you know, the different facilities or whatever, we need to take that in uh consideration. And I'm not sure about if these or organizations actually bring food to the individuals. Now, I know with the giveaways, uh, they have to go to wherever the uh councilperson or the mayor's, well, I don't know if the mayor's had any, uh, any of the council members have had, uh, where they take food to individuals.
And, um, I will say that is a a very good question. Um, I'll probably have to do a little bit more, uh, a little bit more research on that. I know we do have the Meals on Wheels that do uh offer for our homebound, uh seniors specifically. Um, they utilize volunteers to kind of like do for like meal um delivery. They also have Meals on Wheels uh for kids as well, but I think there's still a deficit, as you're bringing up, uh, for those who don't meet either of those criteria. How do we support those people? Um, so I think those one of the things that I would definitely wanna work very closely uh with our commissioner uh of our, of for our area to make sure that we determine what the best strategy and if there are some opportunities to help some of our nonprofits be able to do that a little bit more. Cuz I'm quite sure there may be some volunteers that may be willing um to do that similar to like they have Meals on Wheels, um, but we just probably need to give them a little bit more support into, you know, building out that plan and making sure it's more robust to be consistent and not just a temporary thing.
Great. Um, I know when COVID was going on and the kids weren't in in school, they had the, uh, you know, where the the school buses or couriers were delivering it to the bus stops for the parents and the kids to get this food. So that's something, you know, until the public transportation is there here in the city, that's something we need to consider. And with the Meals on Wheel, I didn't know that they were doing that for kids or whatever, but I knew it was for people that were shut in. So the individuals that are capable of walking, but they don't have the means of transportation, that's something we need to look at.
Okay, I will definitely, I will definitely add that down to um my list.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I see your hand up, Brandon. Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, all right, so so good, uh, good discussion there. Rashard, anything else in the chat? No? Okay. Um, all right, let's talk about um litter. Um, I I know that that several, several things have been tried uh to to impact and reduce that. Um, so, you know, we we've spent money on signs, uh, several rounds of signs. Um, we've replaced the plastic bags at the grocery store with paper bags. Uh, so we've, we've just tried several different things. Uh, do you have, what what ideas do you have? Um, have you, have you checked with some of the cities that don't have this litter and dumping problem? to kind of see what's working on that issue?
Yes, and I, I think one of the things that we have to talk a little bit more is that we're probably gonna have to beef up our staff a little bit more as far as like, who is out there and able to do our cleanup. So when I look at some of the other cities or the other areas, there's two things that they have. They typically have set up a contract with a private service that actually comes in, comes to their city and actually does do these cleanups on a more frequent basis than what their cleanup, their, their city workers cleanup do. And I think the other part is that they have a lot of community people who are volunteers that are willing to do these changes. And I think one of the things that we don't talk about enough, but we could really champion our youth in these, in this particular area, right? We have middle schools, high schools, they have all type of clubs, beta clubs. And one of the easiest ways, right, get more people to adopt portions of, you know, like road and highway. And when they adopt that, there comes a requirement to keep those clean. There are, you know, things that we could do, regulations wise, you know, check in and say like, hey, you know, we want to make sure you send in your report as far as like for a cleanup for this particular area. And it's typically done on a monthly or bi-monthly basis with checking into that. So, you know, people who are adopt the area, they're proud to not just, you know, we have don't litter, you know, illegal dumping, but they're proud to say like, hey, Santown Beta Club, you know, when you coming down Campbellton, this is our adopted highway, they're gonna take pride in that. But that doesn't, not only do they take pride in that, that's how they begin to take pride in their city. And they're proud to say, this is the city that I live in, right? And so again, those small businesses, we have a lot of them in our area. How do we make sure that they, we get them to adopt an area too that's right in front of their business and say like, no one has adopted this area, you're a small business, we want to make sure that litter is not a concern. Would you be willing to adopt this area? And then on a, you know, weekly basis, you all dedicate time to doing that. Because we can't, we can't move our city just by city council, right? That's why the residents vote for us, but as, after you all vote for us, we still need y'all. And so some of this comes from, you know, us, you know, I hate to use the phrase, but, you know, boots on the ground, right? We have to get boots on the ground a little bit more and utilize our resources. So I would say adopting more highways, getting more highways adopted in our, our city is one of my first things I would do. And then I think one of the second things is, you know, championing our youth to be able to support some of that. And then the last portion is that we, there's a lot of re-entry opportunities and programs that are trying to get to reduce recidivism. So people who are, you know, currently residents of South Fulton, and they have to complete those community service hours, partnership, partnering with those pre-child diversion communities, and working with our magistrate judges and the chief judges, letting them know that this is an option, it's gonna be one of those key areas as well that we can utilize that is, you know, in my opinion, underutilized right now.
Right, yeah, I like that, some, some, again, some different, fresh ideas, yeah, I like that. Rashard, I see your hand.
Yeah, so as we're talking about this subject, I do have a couple of questions on this. So the first question that I had is, with the adoptees of some of these roads, I, I know they have called me personally and said that the city advised them that they don't have adequate funding to provide them trash bags and vests. What thoughts do you have so, to make sure that we keep adequate funding for that adopt a road program?
I think one of the biggest things we can do is that city council does have a budget. And so when we are considering the budget that we have for our district, we have to embed those type of things in there, right? We do embed our, you know, our giveaways, we do embed our bookbag drives. And I think those are all still very important things, but we also have to embed what needs to be done to keep our city clean. You know, I know legislation has been drafted for, from, you know, the current city councilwoman is, is green and clean. So, you know, enhancing on that legislation would be making sure that we have the budget to support some of those pickup needs, right? And it's vests, it's the trash bags, it's the, I don't know what they're called, you know, the, the clickers to, you know, you know, pick up the extenders to pick up the trash, right? So providing them with those, with those resources for them as well, and seeing, you know, what do we have, you know, like within our own that we could provide to them if they come to us, like, you know, just to the office, like, hey, we want to do a cleanup day. Do you have any bags that you can provide? Those are small, those are small things that we can provide that should not prevent us having a clean sidewalk, right? Those are things that are tangible, they're not touched, it's not a, it's not a big moon lift to make sure that happens, to make sure. And even if I'm a person that says like, hey, I run a Family Dollar right now, Lowe's, Depot, I did a pickup order, go ahead and pick it up out of my own cash money, because the thing is, is that in order for us to move things forward, we have to be willing to actually do the work, and that work doesn't always have to look so systematic and uptight.
All right, thank you so much for that response. Brandon, I'm gonna get to your question, I just want to ask one more question. So earlier this year, Councilwoman Willis Fossett legislation regarding Merck Mile to raise the weight limit for Merck Mile. Would you support, if you were on council, would you support legislation like that? Because this was going to add a sixty thousand dollar burden onto the, onto the existing tax base. So would you, would you, would you support legislation that is gonna cost us more money, but is gonna make Merck Mile more affordable for users of the facility?
So I think those are one of the things that like, so let me say, I, right now, I would say that I would support it. And the reason why I say that I would support it is because oftentimes, some of the changes, kind of, I'll, I'll talk about like public, the public safety headquarters that, that are, that is being built, right? That is to help us increase our ISO numbers so that small businesses could get those good rates. But that can't be done, that's not gonna be complete for another two years. And then they're gonna be reviewed, so that's another year. So we're looking at probably three years before you actually see the good on that fruit of labor, right? But that is still a good investment. I think sometimes we have to, I know we don't want to incur a lot of the costs, you know, wants residents to incur a lot of the costs for these type of changes. But I do believe that one of the other things that we can do is that if we're driving revenue in other areas, the residents won't feel the cost as much. So we have to do our, you know, our due diligence to make sure those other revenue-driving areas can help eat off some of those costs, so it's not infecting, not affecting those residents. So that is my thing, and I also believe that because we are a new city, we have to remember that to get where someone is when they're at year twenty, year twenty-five, it, it still took a little bit of residents giving a little bit more, and I hate to say money, but like, giving a little bit more of themselves in order for us to get to where we want to be. We have to, we have to really acknowledge that if we want to be the city that, that is on the rise and the city that has the prize.
Thank you so much. Now, Brandon, you have the floor, please unmute your mic, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Glasgow, and thank you, Rashad, for having this forum. Ms. Glasgow, a question for you. What would you consider your main priority for District Two? And how would you work with the city to make sure that priority is addressed legislatively?
Yeah, so I think for me, one of the main priorities is like when, it is gonna be infrastructure, right? I think that there's a lot of work that the, the, the current councilwoman has done in regards to setting out plans for infrastructure, even if it's just as small as like where the sidewalks are gonna be, utilities are gonna be. We have to really build off of those infrastructure plans that are already put in place, but making sure that we have legislation that aligns to it. The second thing, when we think about infrastructure, is what does economic development, how does it, how would it play into that? So while we have a lot of housing that is coming up, we want to make sure that those housing options are stable and provide a quality of life for everyone, but also they're, they're attractive, they're attractive, right? So we look at our land use plans, we have some opportunities for some mixed-use spaces. District Two is a, I want to say it is the prime place for mixed-use. And the reason why I say we are the prime place for mixed-use because it targets a demographic that a lot of people don't think about, seniors that want to downsize their homes, they still get to stay in their area, they're still gonna be able to, you know, live and, you know, have a nice space that they're living in. But also right under it, now they have access where they may have not had before in their previous home to retail, shop, grocery, you know? And we don't always have to think about big brands like, you know, like Whole Foods, you know? We can have brands that are still like, you know, within our means, like for those. So those are the things that I want to say that are my priorities, is gonna be looking at the infrastructure, the infrastructure that high plays in economic development and in the group, in the growth of like our homes as well as small businesses.
Thank, thank you for that, if I could ask a follow-up question.
Well, I say yes, but.
Thank you. So with that, and building off of that, working with the city itself, with a city council, city manager, former government, how would you take that priority and actually effectuate it to, to build that?
Yeah, I think one of, and that's a great question. So because my responsibility is going to be author the legislation, so in making sure that that legislation is enacted, it's gonna be requiring me to work very closely with the city manager. And when I say working closely with the city manager, is making sure that economic development under, is actually meeting the expectations of what our strategic plan is, and they're doing it in an effective way to where it's meeting those timelines, right? So we've built out a lot of things, and I, and I'll go back to the sidewalks itself. We have a lot of those plans that are already built out that, you know, they're, if they're not already started, they're like up to fifty percent completed as far as their progression, and some of them even hoping to be started within the next, next two quarters. And so as I'm in this, in this role on city council, it's gonna be key for me to stay top of mind of those things that are going on to make sure that the man, the city manager also has those things top of mind, and those responsible parties are doing it, and following through with those expectations.
Thank, thank you for that.
Okay, very, very good. So this, this has been a good, a good event, great opportunity, you know, as usual. We have a lot of residents in District Two, we're grateful for everyone who did join this evening, but for the ones who didn't, they, they really missed, you know, a great opportunity to get an upfront, one-on-one, close look at Ms. Glasgow and listen to her ideas, you know, and, and what she would want to do as the, as the city councilperson. So I would, I would ask everyone who did join the call to, to, you know, spread this out to, to your neighbors, your people in your network who, who are missing these forums, and, and ask them to go back and watch the replay. Because, you know, for, for the first time in a while, we actually have a really great slate of candidates from which to choose. And, you know, they're taking their time and attending all these forums and, you know, clearly stating their messages, and, and so the information is going to be there for people to, to make this difficult decision, and this, this important decision. So that's, that's something I wanted to just interject there. Rashard, I see your hand.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get this question out of the chat. It's been alleged that council members are being bought in regards to warehouses and data centers. Should the city council be, should the city council be approval over planning and zoning? And do you believe South Fulton has become a warehouse, data center, dumping ground?
So this is a, a too late question, and I actually take it back to, I think it was a question earlier in the conversation in regards to the charter, right? I think these are, this is one of those unique spaces where I said the language is ambiguous, where we have an opportunity for cer, we could set up certain criteria within our charter where there would be some voting that would need to take place when, at this point, right? And the reason why I say that is because we have not determined fully what those data center ramifications will be. That is something that is a longitudinal study that will not be completed for the next twenty-five years. And from then, we've already seen it happen before in other cities where, you know, after, at that point, people have already been, you know, like exposed to these chemicals for years. And we know a lot of this exposure typically leads to some form of cancer or some type of disease or ailments, ailments that does not prolong life, it actually impedes upon the life expectancy. And so I think those are some of the things that we need to think about when it comes down to our charter. What are some of those things that we want to incorporate, and how do we want to build out that criteria? Because I do believe it's something that we need to do at this point, because we do have a lot of warehouses in this area, and I don't want to, I, I can't speak to the alleged statements of who's being bought, who brought them here, because I don't definitively know that, and I don't think it's my responsibility to mischaracterize any of the council members and put that on them. So I can only speak to what I believe I, what I will do as I've been sitting in that seat. And I do believe that is something that we can begin to restructure our charter about. And when I say do I believe that South Fulton has become a warehouse data dumping ground, I wouldn't say that I believe it's become a warehouse, South Fulton dumping, dumping ground. I think that people have begun to understand, you know, warehouses, they learn processes, right? And so they have learned our zoning process, they've learned our application process, and they've learned what they need to do and say to get those type of approvals. But are they living up to what they said they were gonna do? And so those are the things that we need to really be considering is that not so much that we believe that we're a dumping ground, does our process actually allude to the land use plan that we actually already have in place? Are we making changes to our city to fit developers? Are developers coming to fit in our city that is the prize?
Okay. Jane Williams, I see your hand raised.
Yes, hello everyone, and thank you all so much for putting this on, hi, Ms. Glasgow. So my question is, okay, so you're a candidate, and a couple of years ago, there was a, a policy that was changed in reference to the candidacy signs that are placed out in the, you know, along the right-of-way.
Way, right of way.
And so this has presented, well, I understand why they wanted this policy because signs were being, you know, strong everywhere and left out after, you know, an election. But however, I feel like that it has kind of gone too far because now you can't even really tell when there's an election going on because as soon as a sign goes up, a sign is taken up. So I'm just trying to figure out how can we resolve this issue? Even at the polling precincts, you, you don't see any signs out during the election time and even during early elections. So I'm just trying to figure out how can we try to resolve this issue? And, you know, it, it still be like a win-win for everybody.
I think one of the biggest things, when I look at a lot of legis, not, not a lot, I'll, I'll use that word loosely. When I look at some of the legislation that has been in place, it has been to immediately fix the issue. One thing I know from human resources experience is, anytime you try to immediately fix the issue, you create another piece of havoc, right? You know, when you say a no cellphone policy, now people bringing in pages, iPads, they say that, you know? So one of the things I will do is that, you know, especially when it comes down to signage, and you know, I feel it, you know? I almost told somebody the other day, I'm having a jet-to holiday when it comes down to the signage. Every time I put something out, you know, I get an email from corner, say like, hey, you need to put it up. But someone mentioned, and I can't recall who said it, is that a lot of the ordinance and legislations we put in place, that was to keep our city at that point. We are a growing city now. And so we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and figure out the balance. That is the key, we gonna have to figure out the balance for our city. And not only figure out the balance, make sure that the cadence that we're making these changes and we're implementing them is balanced enough so that it could be the right thing to do. And it's not just the right thing today, it could be the right thing tomorrow as well. So that is my, 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 my piece on the, the signage. And I believe that not only just voting, I think that small businesses, you know, they want to get their businesses out there.
Yes.
You know, everybody business, as I mentioned before, is not brick and mortar. I think about the mobile detailing business, that person who has that brand is like, hey, I just want to wash your car, I know that I wash cars. The landscaping company say like, hey, you know, I'm new to the area, I want to grow my landscaping business. We have to be more inviting. I like to always say like when, you know, teachers would tell you like, hey, you, you can't say one thing and then do another. We can't say that we want to be the city on the rise that, you know, cares about our small businesses and local entrepreneurs, but we have stringent rules that say that, you know, they can't put these signs out, you can't be next to this business, you can't do that, like you can't do this. Is that really inviting? It is not. And most importantly, not only is it not inviting, it promotes a message that that's not truly what we want. And our city promotes a message that we want big business only, who could yield us those big dollars. And I'll tell you more than enough, a hundred people with a hundred dollars goes a lot further than one person that gives you that.
Absolutely, that's right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the audience, if you would like to ask a question to the candidate, please use the reaction button and raise your hand. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Ile, to Ms. Anderson.
Okay, so let's talk about the tractor-trailers. We, we talked, we brought up the warehouses, you know, I can, I can remember taking time away from, from my W-2 job to go to the Fulton County Commission meeting. uh, taking time away from uh, from my W-two job to go to the Fulton County Commission meeting. Uh, when Councilwoman Willis introduced her plan, um, you know, for, for saying that the trucks could not come through the residential area. Um, and there was a lot of buzz around that. Um, but I can say that, um, you know, I, I still encounter tractor trailers uh, on Enin Road. I encounter tractor trailers um, on Stonewall Tale. Um, and even if you don't end up interacting with the truck, you interact with potholes that they are, that they're causing. So um, uh, what other ideas uh, could you, could you present uh, that might really put some teeth behind what Councilwoman Willis um, intended to do uh, with, with keeping these trucks out of our residential areas?
And you know, I think that's a more than a phenomenal uh, question, but I think one of the, this is one of those areas where um, our elected mayor influence is really going to have to be um, at high regard for this type of area because we got to get GDOT Safety Patrol a little bit further down Fulton Industrial, right? Uh, we got to get them a little bit further into our area to make sure that they are, you know, they're aware of what our legislation and what our rules are. Um, and we have to get a little bit more um, savvy with our technology, right? Um, so there are, I, I can't re- I want to say it is Pineville, North Carolina, I believe it is. Um, but one of the cities in North Carolina, they do have cameras that actually catch these license plates, right? Um, you know, like, we have to use that type of technology so that we're mailing companies these fines and fees. Um, it's great to be an author of legislation, but legislation is just paper. We have to make sure that that paper actually invokes an act that can create that change. And so I'm grateful for the work that uh, Councilwoman Willis has already put in for the foreground to get this started. The next part of this process, once I'm elected, is making sure that we put action behind the paper that she's already authored. And that would be through making sure that our mayor has the influence and collaboration with the GDOT to make sure they're down there and also using any innovative technology um, to make sure that we can capture that information and mail off those citations and making sure that they're paid. And most importantly, letting them know that if they, especially if they have businesses here with us and they're not following those processes, um, we're gonna have to look at how that contract looks uh, moving forward.
Very good. Uh, Lynn Reed, I see your hand raised.
Hi, um, so I have a couple of questions. The first one, if this was asked before, I apologize, since I was a little late. Um, I know the question always comes up about getting contributions from developers. So my question is, uh, are you aware if you've received any contrib- uh, campaign contribution monies from developers that are, that are currently or have previously um, done any building in the city of South Fulton?
I have not received any contributions uh, from builders in the city of South Fulton, well, of the state of Georgia or anywhere.
Okay. And my next one, because this is a little bit of a pet peeve for me, I just wanted to kind of get your um, you know, thoughts on this. So I know we talk about impact fees. And uh, I know these developers, they, when they start building, they come through our community with huge trucks, they tear up our streets. And when we go back and, you know, ask what can be done, w- you know, we're kind of met with crickets. The streets stay torn up after they're long gone. Um, and then we're kind of told we don't own the streets, but then when things need to be done, they're telling us we have to put monies down to do certain things. So my question is, is um, you know, I don't know if you have thoughts around how that can be addressed going forward with ensuring that these developers slash builders, you know, put our stuff back the way they found it.
Absolutely. Um, so I, I agree with the, the necessity to have impact fees, right? Um, but uh, not only just having the impact fee, but also making sure that that plan that is developed and written for them is very clear of what our expectations is. Um, we don't want people to feel like, hey, we can pay this fee, now we can do whatever we want to do, you know? Um, that's the first caveat of it. In the second part, I, I know the pet peeve of, you know, like having builders, uh, you know, especially when they're expanding on the backside of the neighborhood and you're like, man, I never even thought nothing can go back in the back of my neighborhood. Um, I think one of the other things we have to talk about is like, what is those capital improvement elements gonna look like with a comprehensive plan? Within those impact fees, because a lot of times that's not addressed, um, when we're beginning to work with developers and deciding to move forward.
Okay, and you, you just uh, brought something else to mind. Um, so another pet peeve of mine is, is that these developers, they have purchased a lot of land in the past. And um, the thing I think is so weird and odd is, is that they're allowed to develop and attach to an existing neighborhood and use that neighborhood's streets to get to their property as opposed to being required to uh, create a separate entrance. So, you know, the communities can kind of stay separated or ensuring that um, if they do use that community's s- streets for their main entrance, that there's proper outages. And, and the reason I'm, you know, bringing this up is because that was done to my community. And uh, we were talking about the impacts of adding these additional whatever, seventy-nine homes and they were told if they stayed under eighty, they wouldn't have to have their street. And, and somebody in the government told them that, so they wouldn't have to spend the money on a, on a street. But I guess the question is, is how do we um, basically fight that? I mean, we, we really tried to fight it with a lot of resistance. Uh, and then the interesting thing happened was a bus driver, you know, passed out or was sick and stuck in the middle of the street and no one from our end down even to the new community could get out until the, they was able to get the bus driver uh, moving. So just wondering about your thoughts about these developers attaching to existing neighborhoods and not creating separate roads.
Yeah, and I think that's one of those uh, those, those tricky nuances, um, because there's sometimes state law that take precedent over some of those like city and local laws that we have in place. Um, I think we just have to, you know, and it, it sounds very simple, but we have to be better stewards of when we are looking at approving developers. We have to make sure that when we are saying we approve and we agree, every T has been crossed, every I has been dotted. Um, the same way we knock on doors um, to get residents to say, hey, please vote for me, sometimes we're gonna have to knock on some doors to tell them like, hey, there's a new developer coming, just want to get your input. It's one neighborhood, you know? We knock on, you know, when I looked at vote builder, you know, seven thousand doors uh, to, you know, like in my district, that you know, that are just, you know, just super voters, right? Um, so those, we, we sometimes we have to take our campaign model and our campaign plan and actually put it in place once we become elected, um, because that's how we make sure that we keep people in place. The same way we had those volunteers that came in and dropped those uh, you know, those flyers and dropped those literature, we may have to do the same thing, print some. We may not be on twelve-point card stock communicating these changes, but you know, rolling up a piece of paper and putting in your door to letting you know that this has happened, you could actually follow just as simple as a Google form and let me know the feedback that you have. Those are some of those small things I think is very important for us to, you know, begin thinking about when we're talking about these spaces because we are a growing and developing city. So there are going to be more areas of land that is going to be developed upon, that are going to be attached to other neighborhoods. We just have to make sure that we're crossing Ts and dotting Is um, of those people to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to receive.
Okay, I, and I just want to just make a point that, um, I know we were told that some of this kind of got attached to us because it came from, you know, the county. And I also want to say that uh, we did fight something in our district and we, you know, we won. So we were told what we needed to do, the people came out, we signed petitions. Um, and I'm hoping that that was, you know, stand because it seems like the same developer keeps coming back, trying trying to loophole the way the zoning that they want. But I do want to say we did have positive change, we did have the community come out and show up, but just, you know, like I said, I just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on when they attach these neighborhoods and do things like that, it's kind of annoying. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Um, so sort of in that same type of um, type of topic, um, I, I intentionally don't go to, to this area very much anymore. Um, and it's, it's where the data center is under construction on Stonewall Tale. Uh, literally right in the middle of a well-established so, um, residential area. Um, it, 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 I, when I do go by there, I, you know, literally it's my heart doesn't beat the same. It, it's just heartbreaking. Um, and to think about the wealth that's been stolen from those families. Um, you know, those were older homes. Uh, I'm, I'm going to be optimistic that most of them were paid off. Um, and then they've now um, you know, basically been forced to sell, you know, or, or continue to live by this, this big thing that didn't have to go there. Um, so I was just curious just to kind of get your thoughts on the placement of that particular um, data center. And um, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with, with the zoning, I'm familiar with the landowner rights and all these kinds of things, but what, what ideas do you have uh, to, to not have something that devastating happen anymore with these data centers? Um, I, I attended a meeting in Union City uh, a couple nights ago and it was about you, about data centers. Um, so um, you know, I know more about them, I know more about the impacts. Um, but it's similar to the fight that, that we did against the warehouses in Union City. It, it really came down to placement. You know, and, and we've got plenty of land, we have plenty of vacant warehouses that could be demolished and, and make plenty of room for these data centers to be beside each other. Um, so what, what are your thoughts about the data centers? Um, and what ideas do you have um, to try to just bring a human element to these decisions? Uh, so that, so that families' generational wealth is, is not stolen uh, by a, a poor development choice?
Um, I will tell you, uh, this is a, a personal experience. Um, I, I think I've mentioned before, I'm from Charleston, South Carolina. And uh, there was a particular area where they wanted to bring some spaces and we fought hard um, to keep that space. Um, it was probably about sixty homes that were some of them began to sell because they were afraid, um, especially when you think about older people. Um, but not only did they take the homes, they, they took away the legacies of my family. Um, and why that's important is because my great-grandfather was one of the first black men in Charleston, South Carolina to have three businesses simultaneously. Um, and it was, you know, even though, you know, like the business, you know, there wasn't too much in his sweet shop anymore, it was a proud moment to walk by and go, that was granddaddy, you know, sweet shop. Um, but it's, it's no longer there. So I think that the humane part of these things is like, you know, really having true heart-to-heart conversations about providing other options. Um, sometimes we have to be able to say no. Um, as much as we, we want to get the money, as much as we know the money will help the city, um, and it could do different things, we have to become a little bit more comfortable saying no. And I think that comes from us actually being on a council and collaborating. Going back to your very first question, pre-work sessions, doing research, you know, as a council working together saying like, hey, this person is on the agenda to bring this data center, I want you to look up X, Y, and Z, I need you to look up this, I need you to look up that, we're going to bring all of our research together. I mean, I don't care if you get your chief of staff, your intern, your volunteer, not sure who to do it, but I want you to get this information. Um, and we come together and have a conversation with real data. That way we're not, now we have a platform to ask questions um, of developers. Um, again, I can't stress enough that the humane part of a lot of the processes, even, you know, like I said, everybody was talked about, so, so uh, city council's responsibility is legislation, legislation, legislation. And I hear that. But the success of city council person, especially in South Fulton, and I will speak for District Two being elected, is being able to effectively communicate and collaborate. Um, and that's how we begin to start bringing the humane things into it because you have to have people who have experiences with heartbreaking um, experiences. As I mentioned in the beginning of the call, I got, I got three accountability partners in here, grandmother, mother, children. So everybody uh, in my house is expecting something. So when I leave that city council meeting, I know that my vote not only represents the residents of my area, if I say the wrong thing, they gonna say the right thing to me when I get in the house. Um, and so I want to make sure that, you know, that is really, you know, reemphasized for those type of, you know, in those particular um, scenarios. And I, and I know my answer was atypical to what, you know, the space is because I really don't want to always give the most politically correct answer. I want to make sure that people understand that authoring legislation is my day-to-day, but to be successful, I have got to get the communication and collaboration of our city council so that we are effectively approving and voting on things together.
Okay. All right, well, we've got five minutes left. Um, again, uh, thank you everyone for attending, participating, uh, asking your great questions. I think we really drew out some good information and got to know um, Dejaris a lot better. Um, and you know, what her plans uh, would be if she uh, is elected to be District Two City Councilwoman. So uh, with that, Dejaris, we will let you uh, kind of close this out uh, with your, your elevator speech, if you will, uh, to just kind of let this group know uh, why you are the right candidate for District Two.
Absolutely. I want to start off by saying thank you all so much for taking time out of your busy schedules on a Wednesday, um, to actually sit and spend that time with me to learn a little bit more about who I am. I want to let you know I am the most qualified candidate for this role, not solely because I am the right person, but also because of my unique experience. I've talked about this a lot and it's important to me because for our city to continue to grow and to be in the space that we need, we need someone who's sitting at that table, who is transparent, who is accountable, but most importantly, understands strategic management. Um, and with strategic management, that comes with someone who is a philosopher of research, right? It's not so easy for me to make a decision because in human resources, I understand that my decision today will impact tomorrow and that tomorrow doesn't always guarantee me being able to advocate for my decision. So I am the right candidate because I understand that my, my authoring will actually be for today and tomorrow. Um, another important piece of all I've talked about throughout this call is that I have all of the representation in my house. That is, that is so far indifferent um, from anyone that I, you know, thus far seen um, across the other candidates and, and, and that does matter. Um, right? Because there is a tone that I am, I am setting for myself because that expectation and that need and that necessity comes from wanting to make sure that I not only make the residents proud, but those residents in my home day-to-day proud as well. Um, we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot to work to do. And it's not a I thing. This is, this is for District Two, there's a lot of work that we need to do with our residents, but most importantly, there's a lot of work we need to do to become a more cohesive city together. And I am the person that will make that happen. And I will make that happen in by making sure that prioritizing the respect, prioritizing communicating not just with my council, but also with the residents of this community to know all of the resources that are available. Cause there are so many things that um, I hear residents ask about, uh, and it's already been crafted. Um, I hear so much about legislation that needs to be done and it's already been put in place, but we just need to fine-tune it a little bit. Find our balance. And so if you're looking for a candidate and you want to know who to vote for, whether it's oct- as early as October fourteenth or November fourth, I want you to know that you've got to go with Glasgow because I am the person that is going to demonstrate what you need with dignity, respect, and poise and make sure that you know that the rise of this city is because we are the prize.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Glasgow. And uh, you put your um, your website there in the chat. So uh, folks can grab that and stay connected uh, and follow your campaign. Uh, best of luck to you. Um, and um, really enjoyed uh, meeting with you and, and getting to know you and hearing about your platform. And uh, wish you all a great evening. Rashad has, has informed us there's another forum right behind this one, beginning in seven minutes. So uh, definitely encourage uh, folks to stay on if your schedule permits. And again, uh, thank you everyone and have a good evening.
Yes, and if you can join the link that I posted in the chat, that's where the next forum will begin. That's what Connie Robinson, she is running for District Two City Council. And before we conclude, I just wanted to thank um, our candidate, uh, Dejaris Glasgow. Thank you so much for taking the time to speak to us. Um, and I look forward to seeing, seeing what happens next in the campaign. And to you, uh, Ms. Anderson, thank you so much for moderating. I definitely appreciate you answering the call. Answer my call when I ask you to do it, so.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. My pleasure.
And everyone check out Guy in Insurance, so she'll, she'll look out for you.
I was gonna say, um, wh- I, I forgot to add one last thing. Um, I will be hosting a meet and greet October the eleventh. I'm locking down the location right now, um, but I will be posting that in Nextdoor, Facebook, my website, so please stay on the lookout. If you see it, spread it so everybody knows to be there.
All right. And everybody, we look forward to seeing you on the next presentation with Connie Robinson for District Two. Thank you so much and thank you so much, Ms.